Okay, I have nine o'clock and we will call to order the December fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners and I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
I think Commissioner Shadwick is going to be a little bit late joining us, but he will join.
Okay, Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Wees?
Here.
Commissioner Wyatt?
Here.
Okay, we will have a flag salute, I believe, from our IT department, so at this time, and that will be followed by a moment of silence. Okay, we will have a flag salute, I believe, from our IT department, so at this time, and that will be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Okay, we will have a flag salute, I believe, from our IT department, so at this time, and that will be followed by a moment of silence.
With liberty and justice, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Well, I apologize, that didn't go quite as smoothly as we had hoped, but thank you nonetheless. I would ask again that everybody stay muted unless you are speaking, and if citizens wish to speak, either during the public forum or when the chairman requests public comment on an item, they must raise their hand so that the meeting host can allow them to speak. Citizens can also send comments or questions to county commissioners via email by going to the website, www.celine.org, and clicking on the county commissioners page under the department tab. Please send any emails prior to Sunday before the scheduled meeting when possible. For further information, contact our county commission's office at seven eight five three oh nine five eight two five. At this time, we will ask for citizens' input on items that are not on today's agenda and limited to three minutes. So Brad, are there any people who wish to speak today?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll go into regular business. First of all, it's our consent agenda, and today's consent agenda consists of approval of prior amendments as presented for November twentieth, November twenty-fourth, December first, and December eighth, along with approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or remove anything from the today's agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand approved. We'll move into action items. First action number one is RFA two six eight dash two zero, authorize the offering for sale of general obligation bonds for rural fire radio equipment with Hannah Stanball, our deputy county commissioner, and Hannah is traveling, I believe, so I'm going to hand that off to Philip Smith Haynes, our administrator. So, good morning, Phil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners. Yes, Hannah is doing multiple duty this morning with respect to the next two items on your agenda. She is currently en route to Motorola facility to see some of our proposed radio equipment, which is the subject of this item and the next item to come before the commission. So, the first item here, RFA two sixty-eight dash twenty, is for your commission to authorize general obligation bonds for rural fire district radio equipment. So, these are the actual radio units that will be required for our fire districts, rural fire districts, and originally, the plan was for those rural fire districts to seek lease purchase agreements with local banks to finance the remaining portion of their share of the radio equipment that they do not have currently in their special equipment funds. They have done that previously on other equipment, and so that was sort of what we were thinking, but on the advice of our financial advisor, we believe that we can actually get a lower interest rate by pooling all of the fire districts together rather than having each one go separately out for financing. And so, this would involve the county issuing general obligation bonds and essentially serving as the bank that would then lease the equipment to each of the rural fire districts until they had paid off their particular equipment, at which point in time it would become their property. So, the requested action for today consists of two separate resolutions, resolution twenty dash twenty-three fourteen, which authorizes the acquisition of the equipment and the issuance of general obligation bonds, and then resolution twenty dash twenty-three fifteen, which authorizes the sale of the bonds and confirms the selection of Stiefel Nicholas and Company as the county's municipal financial advisor. Staff anticipates returning to the commission on January twelfth for an additional resolution that would finalize the issuance of the bonds. So, alternatives for action today are to adopt the resolutions, or to not adopt the resolutions, or to direct staff to find other alternate solution. Staff recommends adopting the resolutions to issue the bonds and sell the bonds and authorize the county administrator to sign the financial agreement with Stiefel Nicholas. The budget impact, there is essentially no impact to the county other than the cost of publishing the resolutions. The fire districts would be responsible for the full cost of their equipment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll also note that our financial advisor and bond counsel are on the Zoom this morning. If there's anything more complicated than I can answer.
Would this action take place right away, or when does this, is it initiated after we, our signatures and vote today?
It's initiated, but the actual bond sale would occur in January. That's why we anticipate coming back on January twelfth. So, when you sell bonds, there are a number of preparatory steps, and so today, you're just really authorizing us to go forward with those steps, and the actual sale would occur in January.
And Phil, you mentioned two different numbers, resolution numbers, or there's two sixty-eight dash twenty, and what was the other?
No, two sixty-eight dash twenty is the number of the RFA. There are two resolutions attached, twenty dash twenty-three fourteen and twenty dash twenty-three fifteen.
Okay, at this time, are there any, and I would like to note that Commissioner Shadwick has joined the meeting. Are there any questions from commissioners or comments regarding this?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
One question, does the Public Building Commission come into play with this bond issuance?
Not with this one, Commissioner Wees. They will on the next item that we're going to discuss, but this one is the county, not the PBC.
Any other questions or comments? Are there any public comment, Brad?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand indicating they would like to speak.
Okay, I will bring it back to the commission for action then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the offering for slinging of the general obligation bonds for the rural fire radio equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think we probably need to note that the resolution number's in there, don't we, Phil?
Yeah, I think that would probably be helpful for the motion.
If I might amend that motion just slightly, Roger, to include resolution number twenty dash twenty-three fourteen and twenty dash twenty-three fifteen, and Commissioner Wees, if that's okay with your second also. Okay, and I will do this as we have done in the past, and I will call the roll. Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye also. So, that passes five zero. And we will move to item number two, which is RFA two six nine dash two zero, resolution requesting Celine County Public Building Commission proceed with selling bonds for the emergency radio communication system. And again, it's with Hannah Stanball, our deputy county administrator, who is traveling, and I will call on Mr. Philip Smith Haynes. Good morning, Phil, again.
County Administrator Philip Smith Haynes pinch hitting for Hannah Stanball on this item. So, as Commissioner Wees alluded to, we also have an action this morning concerning the Celine County Public Building Commission, and specifically, what we are asking on this one is a resolution requesting the PBC to proceed with selling bonds for the emergency radio communication system. So, the prior action was about the actual radio units for the rural fire district. This item is regarding the system itself, so the towers, the backbone system, and so this is a more expensive item than the radio equipment. This is in the nature of six point five million dollars. So, on September twenty-second, you entered into a contract with Motorola for the system, and then the following week, you created the Celine County Public Building Commission and also requested that they issue up to six point five million in revenue bonds. This resolution today is to request that the Public Building Commission proceed with the selling of bonds and formally request that they use underwriting services provided by RW Baird, authorize the preliminary official statement to be finalized and distributed, and authorizes a purchase agreement to be signed by the chair of your commission, as long as the principal is no more than six point five million dollars and the interest rate does not exceed two point two five percent. So, staff, along with our financial advisor and our bond counsel, solicited proposals from underwriting firms to assist with the sale of the Public Building Commission bonds. Even though the bonds will be issued by the PBC, not the county, the county recommends the underwriting firm to the PBC. We did review those proposals and selected RW Baird as the lowest cost proposal, and so would like to go ahead and request that the PBC proceed with issuance of the bonds. The PBC is scheduled to meet this afternoon at one thirty, and then again on Thursday of this week to finalize this action. Again, this would also come back to your commission on January twelfth of twenty twenty-one for the formal entry into a lease with the Public Building Commission. The resolution does provide parameters for the project, as I said, not to exceed six point five million, and interest rates to be below two and a quarter percent. We request that the commission adopt the resolution, and I'd be happy to answer questions. Again, both bond counsel and financial advisor are available as well.
Okay, are there questions or comments from commissioners? If not, I have a couple. The timeline for paying off these bonds, what type of estimate do we have in that regard? Can someone answer that?
Yeah, so these are anticipated to be about a fifteen-year payback, and that's really keyed on the life expectancy of the radio equipment.
And with the fifteen-year payoff, then, that will enter into our budget for twenty twenty-one? Have we already allocated for that?
Yes, we have, Mr. Chairman. So, in the budget that you adopted, it included a payment in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars that was anticipated to be for a lease purchase for radio equipment. We actually budgeted that as a transfer from the general fund to the Celine County Capital Improvement Fund. Once we enter into the lease with the Public Building Commission, we will actually not make that transfer to the CIP. We will actually just pay the lease payment directly out of the general fund and reduce the transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund accordingly. We are anticipating with the interest rates that have been predicted by the underwriter for the payment to actually be a little lower than six hundred thousand, but of course, we won't know that for sure until finalization of the bond sale.
Okay, I have another question. I'd like for the general public to understand this as well as myself, regarding the formal entry into a lease with the Celine County Public Building Commission. Explain that a little bit, Phil, if you can, and how that works, and what is their role in this process?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that is a key point for the public because the Public Building Commission is a little bit of a different animal. So, as we discussed previously when we talked about the PBC, the PBC is essentially acting as a bank. So, unlike just going out and entering into a lease purchase with Bennington State Bank, in this case, the Public Building Commission goes out, issues bonds, but then enters into that lease purchase agreement with the county. So, the point of doing that is that these leases then become obligations of the county that are not subject to annual appropriation under state law, and therefore, we get a little bit of a lower interest rate than we would if we did a strict lease purchase with a bank. And so, that's the point really of setting up the Public Building Commission and having them act in this bank-like role is to get the best cost for the taxpayers.
So, in other words, when the Celine County makes a bond payment, we make it to this PBC, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We will not actually make a bond payment. We will make a lease payment to the Public Building Commission. They will then make a, turn around and make a bond payment in the, essentially the exact same amount.
Okay, and refresh my memory as to how many people we have on that commission?
There are five members of the Public Building Commission. Each member of your county commission appointed one member to the PBC.
Okay, that's coming back to me at this point. So, all right, I'm looking for more questions or concerns or from other commissioners? If not, Brad, do we have anybody on the line who wishes to speak to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand indicating that they would like to speak.
All right, I'll bring it back to the commission then for action, and I would look for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve RFA twenty-six, two six nine dash twenty, the resolution that would give the Celine County Public Building Commission the authority to proceed with selling bonds for emergency radio communication system.
Second, the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two six nine dash two zero, resolution requesting Celine County Public Building Commission proceed with selling bonds for emergency radio communication systems. Are there any other comments? If not, I will ask for a vote here from Roger Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That motion does pass five to zero. Thank you very much, Phil. That was informative. We'll move to item number three, RFA two seven zero dash two zero, lease agreement for county vehicles with Mr. Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. It's kind of the Phil Show today, unintentionally. This item, since we were just talking about leases, let's talk about a completely different kind of lease. So, this item concerns our county vehicle fleet and how we might structure it in the future. So, earlier this year, we were approached by Enterprise Fleet Management about an arrangement under which we could lease vehicles from them at a cost savings compared to our typical past practice of purchasing vehicles. Several cities and counties, particularly in the Kansas City metro area, have begun using this program, which is competitively bid and has received an award from the Sourcewell Buying Consortium, which we can piggyback pursuant to county purchasing policy. Department heads and staff did meet with representatives from Enterprise to understand the program and have evaluated it based on their particular departmental needs. Some of those departments currently have purchased vehicles, others spend substantial sums on mileage reimbursement for business use of employees' personal vehicles. After evaluation of the county's needs, Enterprise recommends that we dispose of a number of currently owned vehicles and lease new vehicles. This program that we're discussing today only covers non-patrol vehicles. The sheriff is in discussions with Enterprise about a program to lease patrol vehicles as well, but this can be accomplished at a later date if the commission approves these agreements today. The longer-term goal of the program is to get the county onto fully leased vehicles. These leases are a little different than traditional consumer vehicle leases, which have mileage limitations, and Brandon Scott with Enterprise is on the line today, and he has a short PowerPoint presentation that Brad will pull up for him, and he can go through, and then following Brandon's presentation and any questions you might have, I will proceed on with the alternatives and staff recommendation. So, Brandon, welcome, and Brad, if you could pull up that presentation.
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody having everybody today. I want to take a little bit of time and roll through some slides here for a few minutes, and then we will open it up for discussion and questions. So, we've really grown over the last five years in the government space specifically, and what happened is a few years back, we started to do emergency response vehicles, and that really helped us get in the door, because that's where a lot of cash flow savings and a lot of overhead comes in in order to save city, county, school district, special district dollars in the budget. We've gone from a thousand government clients across the country five years ago to now over fifteen hundred. So, want to briefly roll through some of this. So want to briefly roll through some of this. You go to the next slide. Thank you. So these are just some of our partners out of our Kansas City office. So our office is the Western Third of Missouri and then all of Kansas. So other counties in the state of Kansas that we started partnerships with, United Government Line County, Leavenworth County, Geary County, Shawnee County. So there are certainly other counties on board already who are executing this program. And it's provided pretty tremendous cost savings at a really minimal capital budget outlay for each city, county, school district that we partner with. So our partnership is set up a little bit differently with each different municipality that we partner with, based on what their needs are, what they've already got wrapped up and what they need help with. So it's certainly not a cookie cutter approach, but ultimately, we're trying to lower the cost of operating your fleet of vehicles across the board. You go to the next slide. So hopefully, you all have had the opportunity to review some of this information already. I don't want to bore you with a whole bunch of different language, but essentially, what we're trying to do is with minimal capital budget outlay, be able to replace a larger portion of the vehicles in your fleet. From a safety perspective, older vehicles are going to have higher fuel costs, maintenance costs, less reliable, and they're also not up to safety standards. So for every vehicle that's older than 2012, they don't typically have electronic stability control, which the Highway Safety Administration has said that it's the most important safety feature since the invention of the seatbelt. So without a huge capital budget, to be able to go out and purchase vehicles to update, you know, simply update safety standards, our program is very different and allows you to replace a lot of vehicles, update your fleet with minimal cash outlay, and while still reducing your maintenance expenses and your fuel expenses. Next slide. So this is essentially what we're trying to accomplish in a nutshell. And nobody does this better than Enterprise in North America. So we're trying to find the effective vehicle lifecycle, essentially, the optimal time to replace every vehicle in your fleet. Pretty simple illustration here. You drive a truck, sedan, SUV, van off the lot, and it starts to depreciate immediately. It's worth less, you know, when you drive it off the lot than it was 10 minutes prior. At some point, you know, once you get on that orange line further down, it doesn't matter if it's a 15-year-old pickup truck or a 20-year-old pickup truck. It's not going to continue to lose a lot of value because it's already lost most of its value to that point. At the same token, obviously, older vehicles, you're going to put more dollars from your operating budget into maintaining those vehicles, less fuel economy. And so we're trying to find, like I said, the optimal time to replace vehicles. So, you know, a pretty regular, run-of-the-mill, half-ton, three-quarter-ton pickup truck has a very different lifecycle than what a, you know, a 5,500 would have with, you know, a crane or a boom on the back or police patrol vehicles. So the amount of time we hold vehicles is going to be very different. But Enterprise buys 1.1 million vehicles every year. We sell 1.1 million vehicles every year. So nobody's as in tune with the market as Enterprise. Next slide. So typically, when people hear the word lease, they cringe a little bit. Like Phil stated, our lease is very different than your traditional dealership type of lease. So your traditional lease, it's got fixed term. You know, you've got to keep it for X amount of months or years. It's got fixed mileage. You can't go over those mileage restrictions. And you're going to pay for denting, scratches when the vehicle comes back. You know, ultimately, you don't have to, you have no responsibility for resale at the term. And it works great for, you know, sedans, SUVs, minivans with predictable mileage patterns and predictable, you know, damage estimates. So our lease, like I said, is very different. So it's got a flexible term. What happened when COVID started, the used car market tanked. We advise our clients, hang on these vehicles for a few months. You know, the market is going to rebound. It did. At that point, that's when we unloaded a lot of vehicles to essentially issue the maximum amount of equity back for our clients. Enterprise is still privately held. We don't answer to shareholders. We answer to our clients, and we're always going to do what's most cost-effective for you. There's no mileage restrictions. So you're not penalized. You're not going to pay mileage penalties. There's no wear and tear clauses. There's no damage clauses. And at the end of the day, we're going to give you the equity back in each vehicle, you know, once we sell it. Next slide. So this is, you know, just an example of coupling the government buying power along with Enterprise's ability to time the market and sell vehicles. So typically, what most of our partnerships have done is they're acquiring a 2020 Ford F-250 extended cab pickup truck, four-wheel drive. Using, say, contract, source well pricing, whatever it may be, you can go out and acquire that truck for $28,400. So what most have done previously, buy the truck, pay cash, hold it for 10, 15, 20 years. But you can see what the resale price does over the course of time if you're averaging 10,000 miles, which is what most of our government clients average. So what we're entering into here is with the county, we've identified a large portion of your fleet that we actually have the ability to sell after a year with 10,000 miles on it. And most people would say, well, why in the world would you sell a truck after one year with only 10,000 miles on it? Because there's nothing wrong with it, and you can really maximize your equity. So the sales price, this exact truck, one-year-old, $34,500, you acquired it for $28,400. So you have the ability to time the market and sell it for a large capital credit. So essentially, this is what we're after, and this is what we've accomplished with Phil and all the department heads is identifying the optimal time to replace vehicles to ultimately save the county in taxpayer dollars. That is all I've got from a brief presentation. So you can stop sharing now. Thank you. Wanted to open up for discussion and questions, or pass it back to you, Phil?
Yes, so the alternatives for the commission's action today would be to enter into an agreement with Enterprise and authorize me to sign lease quotes after review by the appropriate department head to stay with our traditional model of vehicle procurement or to delay a decision. And I understand that this is a radical shift in thinking regarding our vehicle procurement policies. But the reason we are presenting this close to the end of the year rather than waiting a little bit longer is because manufacturers have some end-of-year deadlines, and so there is a risk to delaying the decision. So ultimately, staff does recommend utilizing the Enterprise program. If both non-p patrol and patrol vehicles are ultimately leased, there would be a savings to the general fund even in 2021. And then, of course, we would look for the potential for long-term savings. If the program does not ultimately meet our needs, it could be terminated, and we could return to the traditional model of procurement. And I've outlined each of the departments and the impact on their budgets, and be happy to answer any questions, as I'm sure would Brandon.
All right, commissioners, question and answer time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. Brandon, in one of your slides, you showed the fuel usage rising. And I don't know if it was to scale or not. It looked like a 100% increase in fuel usage. How does that happen?
Yeah, good question. So you're going to have a little bit of fuel degradation over the course of time. So, you know, your pickup truck, you know, your 2010 pickup truck may have started out making 14 miles a gallon. You know, maybe today it makes 12 and a half miles a gallon. So there's going to be some sort of fuel degradation over the course of time. But what happens is you're actually, it's the opportunity cost of not replacing it with a newer vehicle. Because nowadays, the half-ton pickup truck, those trucks, the 2020, 2021s, make 18, 20, sometimes 22 miles per gallon. And so your fuel costs will continue to increase based on the opportunity cost of not replacing it with a newer, more advanced technology vehicle. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And my second question, I don't know if Phil answered this or who, but if we enter into a lease agreement and decide down the road that it doesn't work out for us, then we're looking at having to go out and purchase all those vehicles back, which would be quite a shock to the budget. Is that correct?
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you're correct, Commissioner Wees. That is why I would recommend that we take a pretty conservative approach to this. And the funding that we had put away for, or budgeted for the equipment replacement program in 2021, I would recommend that instead of just letting that get absorbed into the budget, if we do go this direction, I think we should transfer that to capital and build up a little bit of a savings account so that we would have the ability to make that choice in the future without a catastrophic effect on the budget if we so chose.
Yeah, and if I may add one point to that, the city of Smithville, Missouri had similar concern. We just entered into a partnership with them back in September. And so they've essentially created a fund as well to be able to budget for, you know, a doomsday scenario, if you will, for lack of a better term. But if it doesn't work out, then you can continue to just make the lease payments until, you know, the amount of principal is paid down to zero. You write us a check, you know, once it's done for the remaining balance of your last lease payment, we send you the title and the vehicle's yours. So.
All right, does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question. Roger Sparks here, Brandon. Hey, what about the, how does it work where we've just purchased quite a few new vehicles in the last one to three years? Does all of these get traded in, and we start all over with all brand-new stuff?
That's a great question. I appreciate it, Commissioner Sparks. No, so we're not here to buy out the fleet. There are certainly some vehicles that we have identified that were purchased within the last three years. And those vehicles, you can take because they've still got a ton of value in them. So if you take a few of those vehicles, coupled with a lot of the older vehicles that aren't worth very much at all and would require a large capital outlay to replace, in order to accomplish this from a lease payment standpoint, you know, a few vehicles worth $20, $25,000 each, coupled with, you know, five, 10 vehicles that are worth, you know, less than $5,000, and you've got this fund to start with, it essentially pays for these vehicles, and then all of a sudden, you know, the amount of equity we give back to you is equal to, greater than, or nearly the cost of the cash that you have paid us for some of these vehicles, for a lot of these vehicles, actually.
Okay, I have, thank you. I have another question, and it would be in regards, let's say, to the sheriff's office or any of the offices that have the, all the radio system equipment that goes in them, where a lot of times, it's six, seven, eight months before we ever get that vehicle after we purchased it. How does that work on this lease program?
Great question. So we're very proactive in what we do. So we're timing the market in advance. We will typically process the majority of our orders when the order banks open, which is usually August, September, October timeframe. So then what we'll do is we'll process the orders. We'll say, hey, vehicle, you know, sheriff's vehicle number 1234, it's going to be at its optimal time to replace come May of 2021. So in September, we'll actually order that vehicle to again, time the market and time that optimal time to replace vehicles so that the new vehicle shows up in May. It doesn't, from a timing perspective, it doesn't always work out perfectly. But when you can be proactive about this and time the market more often than not, you're really going to find, you're going to, we maximize equity for our clients, and they see, you know, continued reduced costs over the course of time.
And I would say, Commissioner, that Brandon has been in discussions with the sheriff regarding the outfitting of patrol vehicles. And we know that that is a particular issue that we've experienced in the past. And so they've had some extensive conversations, both from a cost standpoint and also, I believe, from a timing standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. So what the sheriff and I have identified is they have, you know, approximately $240,000 left in the budget assuming this program passes to replace six vehicles. That was the intent. Through our program, they can actually replace nine vehicles for a 12-month cost of $164,000. So we're going to be significantly under budget, replacing a greater portion of their fleet so they continue to experience fewer, less downtime, fewer maintenance expenses, better fuel economy, et cetera.
Any other commissioners wish to speak? Mr. Commissioner Vidrickson, I can tell you that I'm pretty apprehensive here. Not, I mean, I've only looked at this for a couple of days now, and I really haven't talked to anybody about it. I'm apprehensive to do this all the 100% of the way. And every single department, I need more time to study this, for me, anyway. My vote would be probably not to do this right off. And I hate going against staff recommendations. I mean, they've done their homework, as you have too, Mr. Scott. But I'm apprehensive here. I don't see anything down for the Expo Center either, which leases, or has vehicles. But, you know, when you look at the Road and Bridge Department, several of their vehicles, they do count towards this 31% over 10 years old. But they don't drive these trucks 200 miles a week. You know, it's just maybe to run downtown to get the mail, some type of that. Not like the maintenance people that are out on the roads every day, driving, you know, 300 or 400 miles every single day on county roads, not like the appraisers that are out all the time. I just don't see a need to replace the whole, we can use that 100,000-mile vehicle and use it safely in many of those positions. And that's where I am pretty apprehensive. I might be more inclined to do it with a department, as an example, on a trial-run basis. But I'm sure not ready to switch the whole county over to this program. But that's where I'm at with it, so.
Commissioner, just a few things. Expo Center is included. There are two vehicles. It's kind of buried in the middle of the budget impact statement. But there are two vehicles that Expo that would be replaced under this proposal, and they would trade in two vehicles. So Expo is included, just so you know that. And I certainly understand the apprehension. This is a completely different way of looking at vehicle usage. It is a complete mindset shift. So rather than thinking about a 100,000-mile vehicle as, you know, something that you hang around and folks get to drive, this is really thinking about what could be the value of that vehicle if it were traded more frequently in the market. So it is, I understand it is a complete mindset shift from what we have done in the past. And I will say, this is not replacing every vehicle in the county fleet. I mean, this is a proposal to replace 2021 vehicles at this time. They do happen to be in multiple departments, but this is a fraction of the overall county fleet. So I don't know if any of that helps. I'm not trying to influence you one way or the other. I certainly understand if you need more time, but just wanted to address some of your concerns.
Well, I totally understand that a vehicle that's traded in or that's taken out of the fleet with 20,000 miles on it, it has a lot more value to Enterprise or whoever than a vehicle with 100,000 miles on it. And the maintenance costs go down and so forth. I totally understand that. Again, you said the Expo Center. I still don't see it. Oh, there it is, right there. I'm confused there, why they would need new vehicles with anything less than 100,000 miles because I don't think they hardly go more than a couple of blocks at a time. Maybe they do, and I don't know it. I know Noxious Weeds, that's a different situation. But that's. that's.
And, and Commissioner, I appreciate the concern there. Totally understand. This is very common. It's, you know, probably our most common concern amongst, uh, commissioners across cities, counties, school districts. So essentially, you know, what we're after, what, what I've identified, what I'm looking at is for Expo Center specifically, sure, the lease payments on a vehicle in the first year are going to cost approximately seventy-three hundred dollars per vehicle. What happens at the end of that year is we turn around and sell that vehicle and we're going to sell it above the remaining balance on that vehicle for almost seventy-nine hundred dollars over what you, over what's still owed on it. So the amount of equity that we give back to the county, call it seventy-nine hundred dollars, the amount of cash that you would have paid us would be seventy-three hundred dollars. So you actually have a surplus into the budget. So because of how aggressive the manufacturers are in terms of giving front-end dollars, government incentives off of vehicles, deep discounts, you essentially turn around and it essentially becomes a free truck. I don't know if that makes sense.
Uh, I'm going to have to challenge that just a little bit. I, I just didn't realize there were any free lunches. You know, when you say it's a free truck, I mean, I'm all in on free trucks, but, uh, I don't, I don't, you're not going to be in business too long giving us free trucks. Uh, I'm back to, I, we have a, we have a responsibility here to the county. I, I mean, I do. I'm talking for myself. As a commissioner, uh, I haven't studied this or have enough information so far for me to do this. I, I totally appreciate our staff and yourself doing the homework that you've done here. But I, I think to vote on something like this for me, I gotta have some more time. But, uh, I'm one of five, so. Unless there are further comments from, uh, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
This, yeah. Phil, is this, I just, a quick question is that, is this kind of basically the same type of, I mean, lease situation that we have with our graders? That we chose to do that with every five years, that we're replacing them every year? So many of them, and it's the same, to me, is this basically the same scenario?
It, it's, it's very similar, yeah, um, to a, a program where you're, um, you know, trying to essentially not use all the value of the vehicle before it goes back to the manufacturer.
Yeah, gotcha. And that, that's how I'm looking at this, is that it's basically, uh, uh, another avenue just like we use with our, our grader operations. You know, you keep new stuff going and you don't have the breakdowns.
But the difference, Roger, in my opinion, is the graders, we own the graders and we do not, and we have a limitation on hours. Uh, there, there's a huge difference there to me. So I see that, Commissioner Shadwick, you have unmuted yourself. You have a question or comment?
Just a quick comment. Uh, this makes sense to me. Um, I appreciate staff looking at things differently. That's kind of what we've asked them to do. Um, at the same time, though, there has to be a comfort level. And so, uh, instead of voting it down or saying no, um, you know, we could, we could table it, but, uh, but I, I would like us to see us do this at some point. But I do understand, um, trying to get, you know, wrap your arms around and feel uncomfortable too.
All right, thank you.
It, sorry.
Commissioner Wees?
Yeah, a quick comment. I, I see this is, uh, if you listen to, uh, Brandon's presentation that there would be a savings to the county, even if it was a wash, you would still have your, your people in newer, safer, better equipment. But I, I too, uh, Chair, would like to study this at least for another week before we, uh, call for a vote.
All right, Commissioner White, you've unmuted yourself.
Yes, sir. I guess this is a Phil question, but, um, I'm confident, uh, council has reviewed all these lease agreements and, and did you have any comments in regards to them?
He has, he did, and Enterprise made a couple of modifications in response to his suggestions.
Okay, um, glancing over these contracts, it's kind of mind-boggling figuring out what's what and who's who. But, uh, I guess that's government at its finest. Um, my other question is, if we do sign this contractual agreement, how long are we locked in for?
You're, you're not locked in at all. So e- essentially, it's, you know, as, as Phil stated, uh, in the overview, if you feel like this program isn't, that we're not holding up our end of the bargain, you would just continue to pay out those remaining leases or you just write a check for the remaining balance and you fire us. So, you know, if it, if it doesn't work, there's, there's no, you, you're not required to lease a certain portion of your fleet or a certain number of vehicles each year.
That doesn't really answer his question, though, I don't think. I mean, he, do we sign, you say we have to pay the remainder of the lease period. Well, what, what is that period? That's what he, I think that's what Mike is getting at. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that's what I would be looking at.
It's going to vary a little bit depending on each vehicle, Commissioner. Um, so they're, they're talking about different types of vehicles. Many of them are the same, um, model that they're recommending, but there are a couple variations based on the needs of the department. So the lease term would be, um, specific to each vehicle.
Okay, I'll ask another question. Uh, if, if, if we okay this, where, where's the competitive bid part of this enter into it? Is this just simply with Enterprise or, or?
So as I mentioned in the beginning, this, uh, is, was competitively bid. Um, Enterprise is selected under a Sourcewell contract, which is a competitive bid, um, by a government standard, and we can piggyback onto that contract under the county's purchasing policy.
And did that, uh, did that situation involve local bidders or not? Or is it just Sourcewell and state contracts and so forth?
Um, so, I'm, I'm a little hard to answer that question, Commissioner. Um, there's no local equivalent of this. I, I mean, there are certainly dealerships locally who could offer us leases, but, um, not with the volume that we're talking about with Enterprise in terms of this comprehensive program that cycles through, um, over a period of time. Uh, this is a very different, as we stated earlier, very different, um, situation than a traditional dealership lease. Uh, so there was, um, a- and again, they approached us and presented this program to us. So there was no, um, attempt on staff's part to shop it to local dealerships.
Question, Chair?
Go ahead.
You know, if, if we enter into an agreement with, uh, Enterprise, uh, and all of a sudden this sweet deal doesn't work that well for Enterprise, can they back out of it and then are we, uh, left with, scrambling our way back out of a lease back into ownership?
Yeah, so, uh, contract is cancelable by either party to the contract. And Enterprise is in the business of leasing vehi- I mean, that's what they do for a living, so, um, I think it would be sort of an extraordinary circumstance where they wouldn't, um, be able to honor their end of the deal or would, you know, decide that we were a bad customer or, or whatever that case may be. Um, but yeah, certainly, I mean, they, they could choose, I guess, to go into a, a different model of business, but then, um, we would be responsible for, um, paying out the, the remaining lease term and then whatever, uh, we wanted to do after that.
E- even on a smaller scale than that, if, let's say that, uh, o- once we, once we step into this, we have quite a bit of buy-in and, uh, even if the, if the, uh, if the agreement would change to where it just continually erodes away where it's not that good a deal for us, but we're kind of locked into it. That's another fear.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, that's, that's why I would recommend that we, uh, continue to bank some money on the side so that we give ourselves that out, um, should the, uh, future situation erode and, and not be in our favor.
Uh, Brandon, you wish to speak?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, appreciate your, your concern there. And if, you know, one thing to keep in mind is, you know, the vehicles that we've suggested would, would maximize the savings for the county. If you're not comfortable with all of the departments that we've included, then you just approve, you know, a couple departments or one type of vehicle or whatever the number is to show that we can, we can execute on this program. We do execute on this program. If we weren't executing, we wouldn't have been able to grow from thousand government clients five years ago to fifteen hundred today. So, you know, keep, keep in mind that the numbers we presented aren't necessarily set in stone, but they will maximize savings for the county. So if you prefer to, you know, go with a smaller amount, you know, fewer departments, that's certainly an option.
I, I appreciate those comments. If there are no other comments from, uh, commissioners, uh,
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, I, can I have another question? Is, uh, quick question here. Is, is the, the models, the brands, the types all locked into what enterprise? Is it just one model type?
Negative.
A vehicle?
No, sir. So I did, I, I do a pretty extensive deep dive every year in analyzing what's the acquisition cost for each vehicle? What's the projected resale on a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year, five-year, multiple-year terms? To be able to analyze and say, hey, maintenance expenses will be here, fuel will be here, acquisition, resale. And so what I've done is we're trying to lower the total cost of ownership, not necessarily the cheapest vehicles, because if, you know, a, a Ram Classic may be cheaper, but a GMC, GMC Sierra is going to cost more on the front end, but if it's also going to sell for significantly more on the back end, we take that into consideration. So this year, we're recommending for the half-ton pickups, a lot of GMC Sierras. Three-quarter ton pickups are a lot of F-250s. So there's not necessarily one specific, and it's going to change every year based on body styles that come out. As an example, the F-150, um, redesigned the body this year. And so Ford is giving fewer incentive dollars off of the front end, fewer discounts, uh, off the front end of vehicles this year. And so they're not as competitive from an overall total cost of ownership standpoint. But because we're as in tune with the market as anybody, this is what we specialize in to be able to advise our clients, hey, last year were the GMC Sierras, maybe next year the Ford F-150s and the next year Ram, Ram 1500, uh, Classic. So we're always going to advise you on what's going to be assessed from a total cost of ownership standpoint for you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one last question. Uh, our department heads all spec out their vehicles with certain needs and, uh, will, will Enterprise have to, to meet those specs? And, uh, e- even though it, it might have a better trade in it, if it didn't meet their needs, why add that vehicle?
Yeah, so as I said, Brandon has had conversations with each of the department heads around their specific needs. So he's not recommending, uh, a half-ton pickup for somebody who needs a three-quarter ton pickup. He's recommending the best vehicle that meets the specific needs of that department. Um, so some folks, for example, need four-wheel drive in certain circumstances. Um, so he's recommending a four-wheel drive vehicle to, to meet that. Um, so he's in contact with each of the departments. He, I, it looks like Darren, uh, Fishel is on the line and, um, Brandon and Darren had extensive conversations around, uh, vehicle types and what Darren was comfortable with recommending for, for public work. So, yeah, that, it's, it's not an attempt to ram something down somebody's throat that doesn't meet their needs.
All right, this time I would like to, uh, ask, uh, Brad if there are any interested, uh, public wish to speak to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand indicating they would like to speak.
Okay, uh, that having been said, I'm going to bring it back to the commission, uh, for possible action.
Sheriff, I may, again, um, I'm in support of this, but I do understand, uh, others not feeling comfortable. And I would just move that we table RFA 270-20, uh, for one week.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, um, table RFA 270-20 lease agreement for county vehicles. Are there any other comments?
Well, one question, uh, I guess for Brandon or Phil. Uh, by tabling this a week, does it change anything for, for, uh, Enterprise?
Politely, um, yes and no. So GM has announced, uh, essentially an end-of-year cutoff for, uh, taking orders for the GMC Sierras, the 1500s. So delaying it, I think it's certainly still possible if it's delayed a week, um, to be able to get this in and, and passed and approved and processed by the end of the calendar year. But essentially what's happened in, in the, the new and used vehicle market is because the manufacturers stopped producing vehicles and started producing PPE and ventilators, um, it's created a large shortage of new vehicles to be purchased. And so what happened is when the 2021 model year opened, the manufacturer, GM specifically, has essentially filled their entire bucket of allocated vehicles that they're planning on building for the whole model year from August to July. They're going to fill that entire bucket from August until the end of this calendar year. So we are up against a cutoff, um, from, uh, you know, GM. At that point, we wouldn't be able to have these vehicles spec out exactly how the department heads have, um, requested. Um, you're kind of at the mercy of what's on the, the dealer's lot at that time and, and typically they're, they're more expensive to purchase them, um, you know, on dealer's lots versus specifically only the equipment that you want and need on your vehicles. So that, we run the risk of a, a cutoff for the GMs and that's the majority of the vehicles that we're talking about.
Uh, during the discussion portion of this, uh, I would also say that i- if we do table it for a week, I'm going to request another meeting before then for a study session to, to get more questions out there. And that, that'd be where I'm at. So, uh, if, if that's what you want to do, that's okay with me. But, uh, on the other hand, uh, we, we can vote, so. Uh, okay, at this time, we do have a motion and, and a second on the, on the, uh, table for, to table this motion or this, uh, RFA 270-20 lease agreement. And, and I will call for a vote on that motion. And I will start with Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Nay.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Vidrickson is nay. So that vote does pass three to two and, uh, uh, in, in favor of tabling this for a week. And I would challenge, uh, uh, our administrator to set up another meeting, uh, sometime between now and next Tuesday, uh, for a study session, public study session. So, uh, that, that would be fine. I probably won't attend. My questions have all been answered. Okay, we'll move to item number four. And that is RFA 271-20 expenditure of remaining Corona's, uh, relief funds. And again, with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, this item concerns the coronavirus relief funding that we received from the state of Kansas, uh, pursuant to your commission's resolution number 20-2296. We did submit and the state did approve a plan for spending the full 11 million, 26,434 that Celine County received. However, um, we have become aware that some of the agencies that were allocated funding under that plan under that plan are likely to be unable principally through no fault of their own to fully expend the funds they were allocated by the federally imposed deadline of December 30th. As a consequence of that, the advisory committee that your commission appointed back in July recommended that we accept supplemental applications for any funding that might be available. Notice of that was emailed out and posted to the county website on November 5th with a deadline of November 18th. Thirty-nine applications were received, including a mix of new requests and renewed requests from the original applications that we received back in July. On November 25th, the advisory committee met and identified eight of those 39 applications to target for available funding. This includes six applications for additional funding from organizations that were part of the plan approved by your commission on August 11th and two applications from new organizations. Staff has worked with existing awardees to narrow down the amount of funding that might be unexpended in accordance with the original plan. We believe that will be in the low $100,000 amount at this point. The advisory committee then met again on December 10th and recommended that the county commission award each of the eight identified organizations, the lesser of their full application or $10,000. That is projected to total 67,62916. And then for any available CRF in excess of that amount divided equally among the organizations that requested in excess of $10,000 up to the full request of those organizations. And then I could go through the recommended agencies if you would like, but they are in your written materials. So the alternatives for action are to accept the recommendation of the advisory committee and authorize staff to disperse funds accordingly. Once a final amount of funding is identified next week, to reject the recommendation of the advisory committee and direct staff to make an alternate dispersment or to direct that any unexpended funds be returned to the state of Kansas as of December 30th. Staff recommends that your commission accept the recommendation of the advisory committee. And once again, thank the advisory committee members for their work on behalf of the community. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions from commissioners, comments? Brad, we have any public comment?
Mr. Commissioner, no one has raised their hand indicating that they would like to speak.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission then for action. And, and I will say that this advisory committee that, that we put together for these Corona relief funds, coronavirus relief funds, they've done a fantastic job. I mean, they jumped feet first right into the fire and did their due diligence, studied all sorts of documents and, and put it together. And everyone on that committee, including our, our own staff, I think Phil and, and Hannah were both on that along with Michelle Barkley. Is that not, is that not the same one, Phil?
Hannah was not on it.
Hannah was not on it. So it was Phil and, and Michelle, along with the five members of the public. And they, they took this job on head-on and they've done a fantastic job. And I thank you to those people that, that were on that committee. So that having been said, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve RFA 271-20 as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 271-20 expenditure of remaining Corona's virus relief funds. Any other comments? Commissioner White, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bedrickson is aye. That carries five to zero. Thank you again to the people that served on that committee. We'll move to item number five, which is RFA 272-20 contract for purchase of real estate. Very interesting.
And thank you, Commissioner. And we have this morning a sort of a late-breaking item. This was added to the commission's agenda yesterday when we received a contract back from an interested seller to convey to the county approximately 17.94 acres of land in the North Salina area, just southeast of the corner of Pacific and Front Streets for the purpose of building a new county jail. And so the contract has, as I said, been executed by the seller and is being presented today for execution by your commission. County Councilor Mike Montoya just entered my office, I guess I should put on my mask, and has the contract with him today. And so the alternatives for staff, for commission action, excuse me, are to execute the contract as presented, to request any modifications that are desired to the contract, or to not execute the contract and request staff to find an alternative site. Staff recommends that the commission approve and execute the contract as presented. This will keep us on our outlined schedule for jail construction. The purchase price of the contract is within the amount allocated for land purchase within the project estimate and can be reimbursed to the county from bond proceeds. And I would be happy to answer questions. And again, as I said, Councilor Montoya is available as well.
All right. Thank you. This is an exciting time for me as a commissioner for Celine County. I mean, this, this is a big deal. So I would call on commissioners for questions or comments.
Is the price public knowledge at this time?
Yes, the, the price is, is in the contract, is section two of the contract. And that was attached to the commission agenda.
I apologize. I didn't see it. What is that amount? Just missed it.
It is $500,000, including a down payment of $10,000.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions in studying the flat map here. It mentions that five, that the owner wants to hold on to five of the lots. And looking at the flat map, it looks like there's at least six lots that, that aren't included. I, I believe the, the blue line is denotes the land that is up for purchase. Okay, my, my, my concern is first is frontage. There's no frontage on, on Front Street and a very small parcel on Pacific. I, I would like to see a little more frontage, but, but I understand that isn't always possible. Second is the, this property will, again, will be, will be landlocked with its purchase. Which, I guess the architect says there's plenty of room here to, for the footprint of the jail with expansion in the future, I assume.
So Commissioner, to your first point, there is an existing right-of-way. Woodland Avenue is platted. It is not constructed. So we, we will have the ability to construct a driveway in that Woodland Avenue right-of-way. So there will be access from Front Street as well as from Pacific. And you can see at the very top of the map, there is an existing curb cut off of Pacific.
Right. And, and that was my next question, that, that we would have access off of Front because I, I would assume that building, the city building is going to require us to have two means of egress into this property. So I just wanted to make sure that the, the proposed Woodland Avenue property is available for us to have access on the front.
Yes, sir.
You know, Jim, I think I can answer one of your questions in regards to the lots that are available. Some of those lots are not owned by this landowner that we're purchasing this land from. So those lots were not available for sale. That, that is the reason for not having those available to us.
Okay, that, that, that's good to know.
Excuse me. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners? I would call on Brad to know, ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time indicating they would like to speak.
And once again, before I ask for, for a motion, I will say I, I want to thank our counselor, Mike Montoya, our administrator, Philip Smith Haynes, our sheriff, Roger Soldan. They have worked night and day on this project to get this going since the vote back on November the 3rd. And it's amazing to me that they have pulled off what they have done in such a short period of time. And it really helps get this project rolling. And I'm, I'm saying thank you from the commission. So.
Commissioners, just one note before, before you proceed. The counselor whispered in my ear here that I should note for the commission that the purchase contract is contingent upon both soil testing and upon approval of this usage by the city of Salina planning and zoning. So the contract does have those contingencies in it.
Which, which brings me to one question. Every, every, all of the 17.94 acres is in the city proper? It's inside city Salina?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This time I will ask for a motion.
Just to clarify before I make a motion, are we asking, in my motion, do I just say that that we're approving this as a commission and we all sign it? Or are we authorizing the chair to sign this?
The way the contract was drawn up, it is signatures from the chairman, the vice chairman, and the secretary. So three of the five commissioners are requested to sign.
My motion then is to approve executing the contract as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 272-20 contract for purchase of real estate. Are there any further comments? If not, I will ask for the vote. Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bedrickson, aye. That motion does carry five, zero. And thank everyone involved. We'll move to informational items. Item number one is the county administrator's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a few brief updates today. I will say that I had listed a jail update on my report when I prepared it because I did not know if the preceding item would make it to your agenda or not. But it did. So my latest update is that you have just purchased a site for a jail. So that is what I have to say about that one. Tomorrow will be the Chamber of Commerce meeting for the month of December. And this is the month that the county will be giving an update. So just wanted to make sure the commissioners were aware of that. I will be out of the office on Friday afternoon. I have some holiday duties to attend to. So I just wanted commissioners to know that I will be unavailable Friday afternoon. I wanted to again extend my personal thanks to the coronavirus relief fund advisory committee. And I, I concur with the chairman's earlier comments about what a great group that has been. And then last but not least, I have asked Health Officer Jason Tiller to come on the line today and see if he has any information that he can share with us. I know that the news is all buzzed with the news of a coronavirus vaccine. And so I'm hoping that Jason has some information he can share with us about the situation locally.
Okay, let, let me stop you for a second. I was under the impression this was going to come under a different heading. So I, I have an introduction into this if I might. And, and I too instructed Phil to invite Jason to the, to the meeting today rather than wait for another week. But in light of happening since our last commission meeting, we've extended this invitation to Jason to speak. I, I want to first say that I've received some information from the Kansas Hospital Association, specific to north central Kansas. And that is, and the numbers that I'm going to give you briefly are specific to the population, the percentages in, in neighboring counties. Celine County right now, as of December 14th, 6.2% of our population has been affected by coronavirus. That is equal to Clay County, which is 6.2%, Dickinson County, which is slightly less than Celine County at 5%, and Ottawa County, which is right at 6%. It's amazing to me, the people, the, the counties who were slow to, to go with a mask mandate. Now I was specifically say cloud and Republic Counties, Republic is at 9.6% and cloud is 8.5. The big one was the, the county of Ellsworth, which was the last one to, I think I'm correct by saying they were the last one to approve a mask mandate. And their percentage of population that's been affected is 14.5%. So those are numbers that surround us. You can go a little bit further out in this report. There's 12 counties involved. And if you go a little bit further to the Northwest, Osborne County is the, has the least amount of effect from this at 3.5%. Mitchell County at 5%, Jewel at 4, and Smith at 5. So those are kind of the, a rundown of what's going on there. Since last week, we've had 448 additional coronavirus positive tests. This is since our meeting last week. And that's why I wanted to specifically ask Jason a few questions in light of the fact that it's been announced that the vaccine is available. Jason, I would like to know if you, if you know anything about this. Like, how many doses is Celine County going to get? When is it going to happen? Where is it going to happen? Who's in charge? Those kinds of relative questions. If, if you've got the answers, I, I don't know. I haven't talked to you. So.
All right. Yeah. So things have been happening pretty quick since last week when the Pfizer vaccine was approved. Unfortunately, right now, the information I have is mostly specific to the state. We haven't been giving anything specific yet to Celine County. And I just had a few notes. I just wanted to kind of cover real quick first, and then we'll see what else we need to cover on that. So since the Pfizer vaccine has been approved, the feds and the state had already designated priority groups for those vaccines. And that was to healthcare workers working in or, or working, dealing with COVID patients and long-term care facilities. And as of yesterday, we had not nor had Salina Regional, as of yesterday morning, been contacted about receipt of vaccine yet. I'm sure you've seen, you've seen a post at this point that the first person, I believe, down in Sedgwick County got it. But we haven't gotten any details locally. The other vaccine, the Moderna one, is supposed to be up for review and potential approval later on this week. As for what we know right now, which I think is for probably the general public that everybody wants to know is how many doses? When is that going to happen? When are we going to have it in Celine County? And unfortunately, we don't have those answers yet because a lot of this stuff is still in flux. What, the one thing I do know as far as for the general public that we've been told is that vaccine for the general public will not likely be available until late spring or early summer. Now, of course, that's always subject to change as more information gets pushed out and as more vaccine doses are, are manufactured and procured. But that's what we are currently being told. So for specific Salina County information, right now, as soon as we get information that is specific to Salina County, specific to residents, then we will start, as soon as we have it, pushing that information out to the public so that they know what, when, and where, and what's required. Right now, a lot of the conversation that we're getting is still kind of very much in general terms, there's still a lot of information, I think that, that we are being told that when we, when it's our turn to get vaccine, and I don't know exactly when that is, even if it's for those targeted populations, that a lot of the other additional information as far as screening for the vaccine, paperwork, supplies to administer vaccine, all that kind of stuff will be coming with that. So anytime, you know, in the next week or so, I expect to start hearing about those initial pushes for our healthcare workers and long-term care, but it's going to be a while for the general public. The other thing that we've been, that I wanted to share too, as far as that, KDHE is putting a general vaccine update on their website once a week, we will be sharing those just to make sure that people are aware of them, and then the, the other thing that we were also told is to watch the governor's press conferences, because that's where a lot of the information regarding the vaccine will be coming out at her press conferences. This information is changing quickly as things happen, as things get, I think finalized at the state level, and then we will have to probably have very short notice when we get information about vaccine coming the area, coming to the area to be able to react, so we're just still going to be looking for that information, listening, of course, to all of our updates to find out what's happening and, and when, but as of right now, that's about the extent of the information I have.
All right, commissioners, anybody have, have any additional questions or comments?
I do. My, my personal is a comment, and I'm interested that things are in flux at the state level. People have known this was going to happen for quite some time, and I, I'm interested, first of all, that that happens. My next is a question, is who's going to set the priority of who gets the shots in Salina County?
So for the initial doses, anything coming, I expect this month or probably next month, those priorities are being set by ASIP, which is the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices at the federal level for some of it, and then the state will be setting those priorities for, for some other priority categories. And what they're doing, from my understanding, is that they will be sending approximate numbers of doses to be able to provide vaccine, you know, vaccine to those pre-established categories.
And I understand that, but let's just say, you know, we have 10,000 or, you know, 1,000 healthcare workers that need to be vaccinated, and 800 doses come in. Who, who sets the priority of which healthcare person gets the dose?
That would be something then that we would have to look at internally amongst ourselves, the hospital, and figure out those that have the greater chance for exposure, and then prioritize them to receive the vaccine, and then move on from there. We expect that there'll be some that don't want to get the vaccine now, and that will want to wait on it, and that there's going to be some just going to wait and watch and see what happens with, you know, larger populations getting the vaccine. And as far as the state's concerned, I think there was a lot of generalities that they knew, but until things were approved and there was information pushed down to them from the feds as far as a lot of the details, I think that's kind of where the, the hang-up for them has been.
And I will just say that Jason has been meeting with folks from both Salina Regional Hospital and Salina Family Healthcare to talk specifically about the, that prioritization. They met yesterday, I know.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, thank you, Jason, thank you to your staff, thank you to everyone at the Health Department for, you know, in the face of a tough time right here, so thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you for the time this morning.
Yeah. We'll move to item number three, which is announcements. Are there any announcements to be made? Not, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meetings, and I will ask for the vote. Commissioner White? We've lost him. Commissioner Sparks? Lost him. Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
And Commissioner Bedrickson? Aye. So it's three to zero to adjourn today's meeting, so thank you for attending, thank you for watching.